Welcome, everyone, to the June 25th City Council meeting. Welcome to everyone here who's come to speak to us this evening and to those at home. The first thing up is the public forum, and I'm going to read the, you know, how you go through the public forum like I always do, but I do want to make the comment tonight that we work very hard up here to listen respectfully to everybody's point of view, and so all we ask of the public is that they do likewise with us and speak respectfully of everybody. So, with that, the public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues. For those items which have already been heard by a hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene Residence, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. A yellow light will come on when you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. And we have 29 people signed up for tonight, so we'll get going here. Jerry Smith is up first, followed by Mary Salinas.
I'm Jerry Smith from 5041 Saxon Way in Eugene in the great Counselor Taylor's Ward. I speak in the spirit of '76, not 1776, but of the 76 years I've lived in America. This year's 4th of July, I do not celebrate our great progressive revolution. I grieve its loss and hope to change the threats to its extinction. Scientists say humans have a 50/50 chance of surviving until the end of this very century. Eighty-seven years from now, humanity as a species may be gone with many other currently living species. How can I celebrate that America is the richest and most powerful nation in the world when every third child in Lane County is hungry and their families are depression poor and nothing is being done to mobilize about this? Perhaps a green revolution, a green economy, might come if the cruel and stupid controllers of Congress do not continue to only enrich themselves and deny that poverty even exists. Just being ironic, I would say, we all know that there is no need to provide shelter, income, or mental health care to the depressed here in Eugene. If there was a need, surely the wealthy community would do something about it. This is all so sad. Where is the America that I loved? The America that freed me from being a depression baby? Where is the America that protected us from the corporate fascism of Germany and Japan? Where is the America that paid factory workers enough to buy the new cars that they made? Today, at Eugene's First Christian Church, not a public agency, I assisted a wet family with a three-year-old that was left out in the rain last night because there was no shelter for them, nothing available at all in town, last night. Today also, I met with two men, each of the men are almost 40 years old, disabled since birth, and abandoned as disabled people who should have gotten disability payments all their lives but left unsupported and homeless since their high school special ed classes were over. So much for wealthy America. I urge you to notice these Americans, take care of them and shelter them.
Thank you. Mary Salinas is next, followed by Bill Rogers.
Yes, hello, my name is Mary Salinas. I live in Springfield. I'm a spokesperson for the homeless. This three minutes is like electric shock therapy. I do it regularly. It's not hurting me. I'm getting smarter, so, okay. Last week in Springfield, I thought I gave myself a heart attack, but I intend to keep coming back here, week after week, month after month, until you hear the simple math and the simplicity of what I'm offering you as a solution to the homeless problem. I want disability checks for the homeless. The Encyclopedia of Social Work says yes. The refusal of the federal government to hand out disability checks is one of the major reasons that we have homelessness. I want disability checks for the homeless. I'm very concerned about global warming also, so you see, if you would get this passed so that the homeless have disability checks, future climate refugees will be able to be fitted right into the system. Once you get a disability check, you get medical, you get food. The hospital here, which just lost $30 million last year, would all of a sudden be getting Medicare, Medicaid, for the services they can only halfway provide the homeless. I was homeless for two and a half years, on my first day of homelessness since I went to the mission. I was instantly horrified by how people were treated. Nothing's different here in Eugene. That was in Grand Junction, Colorado. I was horrified. And then the following two and a half years, I became changed by what's life like out there on the streets? People are weeping and crying and dying. They have cancer and they have diabetes and they have terrible things and they have to live with these things in the rain. My friends were found in the river and in dumpsters, OD'd, they died of cancer which was untreated. Untreated cancer on the streets out there. I don't know how to come to you. The dictionary says homelessness means without a home. That's all it says. You go look in your dictionary. That means that every word that you've ever attached to the homeless is your word, Mr. Polling. You need to take those words home and wonder why it is that a drunk should bother you so much? Why is it is that laziness, Ms. Taylor, should bother you so much? Those are your words. All the words that I hear from people about the homeless, they're not true. The homeless don't have diseases. I could start right there. St. Vincent says the homeless have diseases. That's why we're here. I've never met a homeless person with a disease. I've never had a homeless friend with a disease. Not one of them has died from a strange disease. It's all simple, basic humanity out there. Please bring us in. Thank you.
Bill Rogers is next, followed by Charlie Swanson.
Good evening. My name is Bill Rogers. I am a resident of Ward 1 in Eugene and represented by Counselor George Brown. First, I want to thank you both for myself and for two groups that I represent here tonight, Common Cause in Oregon and We the People Eugene. I want to thank you for your passage in February of Resolution 5055 regarding campaign financial regulation and corporate personhood. By doing so, you joined a large and growing group of cities across Oregon and across the country that have responded to the widespread distress about the explosion of money that is being poured into political campaigns. We feel that what is at stake is nothing less than our representative democracy and that the only solution, the only plausible way to counter this threat, is by adoption of an amendment to the U.S. Constitution. Today, I am asking that you pass another resolution, one that would place an advisory question on the November ballot to allow the people of Eugene to vote on this same issue. Common Cause in Oregon, in consultation with Move to Amend and other groups, has drafted a resolution that we would like you to consider, including a draft of the advisory question that we would like placed on the November ballot, and I think that's been circulated to you. I am eager to talk to any of you who would consider introducing such a resolution to the council. I know that you have a lot to do in the next few weeks, but I hope that you share my sense of urgency about this issue. Every election cycle that operates under the existing Supreme Court decisions will, I am convinced, further undermine the public sense that our system is fair and equitable. Moreover, the process of passing a constitutional amendment is generally a long one and an arduous one. To get an advisory question on the November ballot, I understand that you would have to pass the enabling resolution no later than July 25th. There is little time to spare, but it is doable. So I urge that at your session next week, you consider a resolution that would place an advisory question on this issue on the November ballot. Thank you.
Charlie Swanson is next, followed by Stan Taylor.
I'm Charlie Swanson from Ward 3, Helen Zelenka's Ward, and I'm again requesting that the council refer to the voters of Eugene for the November 2012 ballot, the advisory question that Bill Rogers had just mentioned. Shall Eugene voters instruct Congress to amend Constitution to limit political campaign spending and provide constitutional rights only to people? Montana is likely to vote on a similar question in the November election. Democratic Governor Schweitzer, Republican Lieutenant Governor John Bolinger, and Republican former Secretary of State Werner Burdelson are all endorsing that Montana voters pass a resolution that would make the following state policy: that corporations are not human beings with constitutional rights, that money is not speech, and they'd also charge Montana's congressional delegation to support an amendment to the United States Constitution to nullify the Supreme Court's ruling in Citizens United versus FEC. Last week, Lincoln County Commissioners voted 3 to 0 to place a straw poll related to the Citizens United decision on the November ballot. I think it would be useful for Eugene to join the state of Montana and Oregon's Lincoln County in letting voters have their say on the advisory question. I feel that it would strengthen the position that the council already took in passing Resolution 5055 in February. Having the issue of a constitutional amendment as a subject of discussion during the election season will help those running for office take the issue more seriously, since people will be talking about it and asking those running for Congress or the state legislature about the issue. On another issue which Counselor Zelenka is pushing the council to consider, a U of O emeritus professor with whom I have been working on coal issues has gathered data that suggests the annual health costs due to air pollution from coal burning exceeds the cost of electricity from coal. Even without considering the environmental impact of coal mining, between the health costs and the cost in excess of global warming, coal is probably the most expensive source of energy that we have. We don't recognize it as such because most of the costs are spread among all humans, most of whom are not receiving any benefits of the energy produced. For this reason, consideration of ban on coal trains through Eugene is useful. Thank you.
Stan Taylor is next, followed by David Pachioni.
My name's Stan Taylor. I live at 1285 McLean Boulevard in Betty Taylor's Ward. You know, I wear a lot of hats. I'm a faculty member at Lane Community College, teaching political science, and chair of the Lane Peace Center. I am an attorney at law with licenses to practice in Oregon and California and Washington, D.C., with an emphasis on constitutional law. Been a board member for the Civil Liberties Defense Center, but tonight I'm here with We the People Eugene and the local affiliate of the National Move to Amend Campaign. And I'm here to also ask you to refer a resolution to the ballot that would both follow up on the resolution that you put forward in February, that is, to end corporate constitutional rights and to limit the idea that, or to set forward the idea that money is not speech and giving legislatures the right to pass legislation that controls money in politics. It's more important now than it was in February when we last met, for two reasons. One, I think all of us have seen the amount of money, the obscene amount of money that has been poured into the political campaigns over the last few months, that is non-transparent, non-sunshined money, so we don't know where it's coming from. And it clearly is having an impact on the political process. The second is that, you know, today, the Supreme Court ruled on the Montana case that was before the Supreme Court, and it ruled in a 5 to 4 ruling that the Montana law that limited corporate campaign contributions was unconstitutional along the lines of Citizens United. Now, what that means is that state legislatures and local legislatures like yourself or local representatives like yourselves have lost the power to regulate, that is, to put forward spending limits on political campaigns. And I think it's important to recognize that what's happening with the idea of corporate personhood is the destruction of democracy, the ability of state governments and local governments to regulate on behalf of their own citizens. For that reason, it's important to put this advisory question onto the ballot and as part of the larger national Move to Amend Campaign, which is being incredibly successful, their hope at this point is to put 50 ballot measures across the nation on the November ballot to different places across the nation to help build this national grassroots campaign to amend the Constitution, because it is now clear with the Supreme Court rulings that legislatures cannot do it on their own right, and the only way we will make this change is through a constitutional amendment. And so by helping that groundswell occur, by putting it on the ballot, it will help Eugene to make that happen.
David Pachioni is next, followed by Frank Bignola.
Hi, dear councilpeople. My name's David Pachioni. I'm in Andrea Ortiz's Ward. I want the council to refer the advisory question. Shall Eugene voters instruct Congress to amend the Constitution to limit political campaign spending and provide constitutional rights only to people? The people and their elected representatives have never agreed to give any constitutional rights to corporations and have often agreed to limit political contributions and expenditures. But since 1886, activist Supreme Courts have been giving constitutional rights to corporations, and since 1976, the Court has been undoing political contribution and expenditure limits. It is time that the people and their representatives unto the Court's egregious, undo the Court's egregious decisions. In Eugene, our council has already done their small part in passing Resolution 5055. We now hope that the council will give the people of Eugene their chance by referring the advisory question. I would like also to express my support and solidarity with the group No Coal Eugene. We want to stop coal trains from Wyoming to Coos Bay and further on going to Asia. These coal-laden trains are a danger to the community, not only because they transport explosive material, but because in the best of cases, large amounts of airborne coal will be released into our environment for us to breathe. We need to focus on solar and wind and not fossil fuels. Also, community village will be a boon to Eugene. I hope you all realize this and support it. Power to the people.
Frank Bignola is next, followed by Elizabeth Nissen.
Hello, my name is Frank Bignola, and I'm in Prior's Ward, and I want to speak, give a few simple facts on global warming, and it's happening now. One of the things, when the atmosphere warms, it holds more moisture, and it takes a stronger front to make the moisture fall out of the sky. So what we're seeing is larger rain events and more extreme weather events. So this is something that's happening now, and we can see it. In addition, the average nighttime temperatures are increasing, and these are all effects of climate change. Now, I run a network of solar monitoring sites in the Northwest, and over the last 30-plus years, we've seen the direct solar radiation increase by 10 to 15 percent. About half of this has been the cleaning of the atmosphere by our environmental laws, but the other half is changing in our cloud patterns. So we are getting mostly sunnier summers, so we're going to have to adjust to these changes. Now, these do have effects on the economy. Recently, we read in the paper where the oyster beds over on the coast have had to send their larvae growing operations over to Hawaii. And this is just a sample of things that can happen. We're finding more disease vectors are moving north, and there's a lot of, there's going to be a lot of disruption, so we ought to prepare for that. So I gave you a plot of our data. We've been slicing it, and at any time, if you have any questions about climate change, I'd be glad to answer it. Thank you.
Elizabeth Nissen is next, followed by Mike Brinkley.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Nissen. I'm actually a resident of Bend, but I'm here on behalf of the Center for Biological Diversity and representing the members that live here in Eugene. I am here to support the Clean Air Cities Resolution. Climate change is an issue that is affecting and will continue to affect our world. Today, climate disasters attributed to climate change have impacted many communities and will account in the decline of thousands of species worldwide and species here in Oregon, like the cascade frog and the American pika. The science is in, climate change is real, and while many of our nation's elected officials in D.C. have decided to take the ostrich approach to policymaking and bury their heads in the sand, it is our nation's local leaders in cities around the countries who have decided to take action and stand for clean air and reductions in greenhouse gas emissions. The city of Eugene has a unique opportunity to be a part of the solution and join the ranks of 25 other cities across the U.S. that have passed similar resolutions. These cities include Chicago, Cincinnati, Pittsburgh, Salt Lake City, Milwaukee, Tucson, and Tampa. This is an increasingly urgent crisis, and by passing a resolution, you are telling people in Washington, D.C. to move swiftly and fully employ and enforce the Clean Air Act to reduce carbon in our atmosphere to no more than 350 parts per million. If we take action now, we have the ability to protect biodiversity and human life in the future. Thank you.
Mike Brinkley's next, followed by Pauline Hudson.
I'm Mike Brinkley, 2582 West 28th Avenue from Eugene. I'm speaking to you as a citizen of Eugene and as the Eugene representative of the C.R. Club Beyond Coal Campaign and political chair of the C.R. Club Many Rivers Group. We support the two resolutions before the council, which oppose the export of coal to Asian countries and support reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. These two resolutions are closely related, as the burning of coal is a major source of greenhouse gas emissions. We have deep concerns about plans to move coal from eastern Montana and Wyoming through Oregon for shipment to Marks and Asia. There are many reasons for our objections, generally to the use of coal as an energy source, including air pollution, contribution to climate change, and economic threats to the Northwest nation renewable energy economy. We are addressing these issues aggressively, but in this opportunity, I want to focus on some facts about coal shipments that will significantly affect our quality of life here in Eugene. Coal exports threaten our healthy community. Here is a scenario if the Port of Coos Bay is allowed to export coal. Trains over a mile long will travel south from the Portland area through our city, connecting to the Coos Bay rail link to travel west to the port. Coal dust fouls our air, pollutes our water, and sickens our children. Families living along rail lines in our community would be exposed to dangerous air pollution from these diesel trains and the toxic coal dust. Coal dust contains the following poisonous materials: arsenic, selenium, uranium, and mercury, all of which are harmful to human health. How much dust is released by a typical railroad car? As much as 3 percent of a coal car's load, which is typically 100 tons or more, can blow away in transit. That is 6,000 pounds of coal dust per car, my friends. The cars are not required to be covered because increased costs and inconvenience to the shipping companies. Furthermore, coal can self-ignite in confined conditions, so covering the coal cars could result in fires. Depending on the volume of coal transport from the Port of Coos Bay, several over-mile-long coal trains could pass through Eugene daily, increasing the pollution from diesel exhaust, which is also a known health hazard. Local rail tracks may not be able to handle the increased loads that coal trains will demand, so infrastructure upgrades, including new overpasses, underpasses, may be required. What problems will these upgrades and required construction projects cause for residents and to optimal flow of traffic? And under current law, railways are responsible for only 5 percent of the cost of infrastructure improvements. This means taxpayers will pay the rest. Finally, we see very little positive economic advantage to our community in allowing these trains to pass through. The jobs that would be created are few and will be in Montana, Wyoming, and at the ports that process the coal. So why should Eugene risk all the downside for no discernible upside? These are issues that we believe should be of high importance to the council and its Sustainability Commission. We believe the rail export of coal through our community is a clear and present danger, and we encourage the council to pass the two resolutions opposing coal transport through our community and in support of greenhouse gas reduction.
All those in support of this, please stand. Thank you.
Pauline Hudson is next, followed by Ruth Demler.
From the last hearing regarding the fallout from the destruction of West 11th, homelessness. No child should have to live on the streets in this city. Regarding the Occupy Eugene movement and their taking over the Jefferson-Washington Bridge Park, they left the park trashed with a metal link fence around it, taking the park away from the people. Then the city had to pay $5,000 to clean up the mess. The taxpayers should have to be responsible for this unexpected expense. These people should have been made to clean up after themselves, not leaving the mess for others to do the job, plus footing the bill. On the current proposal to raise taxes, the taxpayers should not be the ones to pay up again and again and again. Have the highest-paid members of staff taken cuts in salaries and benefits? These salaries could go towards unexpected expenses here and there, such as the $5,000 to clean up the park. People are still tightening their belts. Those at the top should be doing the same, making some sacrifices along with the rest of us. Our taxes pay these salaries and fund the running of the government. A permanent site for the homeless sounds wonderful, however, who pays again for toilets and trash collection? Rats are attracted to trash. Would the taxpayers be expected to pay for these services on a permanent basis? They definitely would be needed. Public hygiene and dealing with trash and associated expenses need to be a major part of the discussions. There also may need to be a police presence at times, using our taxes again.
Ruth Demler is next, followed by Marcus Lansky.
Ruth Demler, 1745 Hurgrass in Allen's and Linka's District. I, we just had one topic after another today, and I would start off by saying that I certainly urge you to support having the resolution put on the ballot for limiting campaign contributions. I think at the bottom of every issue that we see democracy failing in our country is because of the unlimited campaign donations to few people. Second, I would like to talk about Opportunity Village. I hope that you plan at the next meeting to please set aside land, see that land is set aside so that we don't have another winter where I have to walk down paths and see frozen, stiff sleeping bags along the river, or where I have to see people in their wheelchairs underneath the bridge trying to escape the snow and the rain. The reason you have so many homeless families at the moment out on the street today is because we no longer provide that with our first-family effort where we have families located during the school year only at the different churches. As soon as the school year ends, they are outside, out on the street, and hopefully they have found someplace to camp. But it's a shameful way to have a community where we have so many families, a growing, a large growing number of families in our community homeless. And this is going to continue with the expected 7,000 foreclosures in our community. We can expect a lot more homeless families. Then, as far as the coal train going through our town, I think that should be stopped. I agree that we can't stand any more pollution. The pollution we have 24 hours a day from Seneca is more than enough for our community and very harmful for breathing, and even worse than having coal train go through the city, but we have it, and somehow it should be corrected. Thank you.
Marcus Lansky is next, followed by Noah DeWitt.
Hello, I'm Marcus Lansky. I live in Betty Taylor's Ward in Eugene. I'd like to say that climate change is not in our future, it is here now in Boulder, Colorado, where I In Boulder, Colorado, where I lived for many years, it has been over 90 degrees for the past week and predicted to be over 100 for the remainder of the week, this week. I have never known it to you, this warm, this early in the summer. In Eugene, this June has been cooler and wetter than I remember Junes during the seven years I have lived here. In the distant past, when carbon dioxide levels weren't much higher than today's level of 400 parts per million, extended periods of dry conditions have prevailed along the entire western Pacific coast. I am concerned that Eugene's climate will become markedly erratic as carbon dioxide levels climb toward 500 parts per million, as they are projected to do within the next few decades, unless we immediately control our carbon emissions. I fear that we could experience more torrential rains during the winter and hotter, drier conditions during the summer. I think it is vital to demonstrate Eugene's support for the EPA's control of carbon emissions as stated in the Clean Air Cities Resolution that you are considering. Thank you.
You. Noah DeWitt is next, followed by Cindy, looks like Biles or Bills.
My name is Noah DeWitt, and I'm with the No Coal Eugene Group. And if anyone is interested in getting involved, I have a sign-up sheet. See me afterwards. I think that Councilor Zelenka's resolution regarding coal trains is righteous and important. Eugene is a leader against pollution, against global warming, against fossil fuels. Our community and others throughout the Pacific Northwest have been working hard to close coal-burning power plants in our state and our country, and the projects proposed by coal corporations to export out of our back door, the pollution, it goes against everything we stand for, and it goes counter to the direction we need to be heading. They want to turn Eugene into an apparatchik of the coal industry. If the Coos Bay proposal goes through and the five other ports in question as well, 145 million tons of coal will be exported to Asia annually, which equates to 262 million tons of CO2 into the atmosphere. Corporations have the right to ship toxic, polluting coal trains through our town, and our community has no way of opting out. So this resolution is a really important statement that our city government supports the people who oppose, its people who oppose this export.
Cindy Biles is next, followed by Jerry Rosemeyer. Jerry Rosemeyer, followed by Richard Shire.
My name is Jerry Rosemeyer. I live at 1380 Hughes Street in Eugene in Councilor Farr's Ward. I live in the active Bethel Citizen neighborhood, the southern boundary of which are the train tracks, which if all goes badly and the Coos Bay coal export facility is built, trains will use to carry coal to the coast, right on the southern border, southern boundary there. I'm opposed to that happening in Eugene, and I welcome Councilor Zelenka's proposal and the council for considering it. That coal train, if it goes through my neighborhood, will block Seneca Street, Bertelson, Greenhill, and other streets in Eugene. And in addition to the coal dust and the diesel, I'm referring to Governor Kitzhopper's, what I consider to be his brilliant and courageous letter that he wrote recently to federal agencies requesting an environmental impact statement on the whole issue for Oregon. It could also affect other rail transportation through Eugene, vital part of Eugene, including passenger, passenger traffic. But I'm specifically concerned, or mostly mainly concerned, about global warming. At this stage of the game, it should be obvious to us all that leadership on the issue of global warming is not going to come from the top down, not after the Rio 20-plus summit, not for quite a while now. It's going to begin here in local communities, in neighborhood groups, which I just attended a meeting, and it was a major source of discussion. It's going to begin here. We're going to work our way up. Many towns and governing bodies in Washington State have passed resolutions against the coal train juggernaut. The City Council of Seattle has passed a resolution. The mayor of Portland has passed a, has made a statement opposing coal trains, and I urge the council to very seriously consider it and start putting pressure higher up the chain to really get something done. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Shire or Smire? No? Okay. Joe Tindall, followed by Joshua Scove.
Hi, my name's Joe Tindall. I live near the downtown on West Broadway. It's getting on towards three months now since the Homeless Task Force returned its report and had six recommendations, none of which has really seen much motion at all. On the day that the task force report was delivered, you guys could have actually started a commission, but that hasn't happened, and you could probably do that tonight if you wanted to and get that ball rolling. I call your attention to the cleansing that's been going on down in the downtown area and other sections, basically to clean up the town for the track trials. And those of you who haven't read it already, John Monroe wrote an excellent guest opinion in the Register-Guard on that particular topic. It's now become clear that the police are going to be asking for an extension to the exclusion zone downtown, which you guys will be voting on come this fall. And so now is the time to be requesting the information about who is being excluded and what the crimes are that they are being used to justify those exclusions. That information, I understand, has been requested repeatedly for a number of years and has not been forthcoming, and so maybe it's time to try a little harder to pry that out of the police department. And finally, I would hope that you folks would pass all three of the ballot questions that have been suggested this evening on corporate personhood, on the climate change, and on coal export. Thank you.
Joshua Scove is next, followed by Laura Hoffer.
Hi, Joshua Scove, 2036 Willamette. Here as a private citizen, though, I'll refer in a moment to my waning affiliation as one of your advisors. Good evening, councilors, and thank you as always for your attention, and hello also to Aria and Jasmine, my daughters watching at home. I'm here in support of two resolutions currently under consideration on coal and on the Clean Air Act. I thank all councilors who have advanced these efforts, especially Councilor Zelenka and the mayor as well. I think you've heard a great deal now, and I think you'll hear more tonight, on the ills of coal exports and the climate crisis. I'd like to remind everyone of the compelling economic rationale for aggressive climate action. Previous testimony touched on this. The short version is that climate action doesn't cost, it pays. But uncharacteristically, I'm not actually here to share more details. Instead, I want to speak to the undertaking of such action at the local level. Often, our words on big issues, big, really big, like these, not just as individuals but even as elected bodies, are simply cast into the void. We speak, we shout even, but our message and our voice are quickly lost or forgotten. I predict a different future for these resolutions on climate action via the Clean Air Act and on coal. I see instead the opportunity for you to give momentum to early leadership on these efforts. This is my hope, of course, but it's also a prediction, and I'm hanging these hopes and predictions on the success of Mayor Piercy's early action as a signatory of the U.S. Conference of Mayors Climate Protection Agreement. When Mayor Piercy signed that pledge back in 2005, 2005, she was among just 20 some municipal leaders across the country, and the action was bold, and I bet some observers even thought it was, well, fill in any adjective for which bold is a polite euphemism. There are now over 1,000 cities whose mayors have signed the agreement, and that effort has spawned better thinking and strong climate action around the country. That leadership by Mayor Piercy looks pretty good. I'm suggesting to you that these current actions on coal and climate are a chance for all of you to lead again. I ask you to consider how you'll feel in 10 or 20 years about this action. Actually, I'll skip ahead. I'll tell you now. You'll feel good. Finally, a personal note. You'll recall that I am a member of the Sustainability Commission, but only for about another five days. This is my final testimony before you as a commission member, though I am here as a private citizen tonight. In a small way, compared to your commitment of time, energy, and patience, I've come to understand what is required for public service, and I thank you for your service. I thank you for the attention you've given to the commission, and I hope you continue to use it early and often as an advisory body on issues such as these. I look forward to our future encounters. Thank you.
Laura Hoffer is next, followed by Tom Bowerman.
Thank you for listening to us tonight. My name is Laura Hoffer. I live on Russet Drive in George Paulings Ward. I'm here tonight because I'm a grandmother. I have three grandchildren, six, four, and two. The youngest is named Aleah. She has red hair and warm brown eyes. In 2050, I won't be here, and she'll be 40. I want to leave her and all other children a planet that I might recognize. So because of that, I'm asking you to support the resolution in front of you that to reduce CO2 emissions by enforcing the Clean Air Act. I was surprised to read that Chicago, Cincinnati, Pittsburgh, Albany, New York, and Tampa, Florida, all large cities, much larger than we are, have supported this resolution. But like a previous speaker, I know that action on this issue is not going to come from the top. It has to come from us. It has to come from you. So I'm asking for your support for this. Thank you.
Tom Bowerman is next, followed by Joanne Ernst.
My name's Tom Bowerman. I'm speaking on behalf, representing Policy Interactive, a research organization, 532 Olive, Eugene. I've given you some evidence of a survey, which we participated with DHM Research in Portland, polling 300 citizens, representative sampling in Eugene, covering all the districts of Eugene. And I'm just going to touch, summarize three of the 12 items that I've given you, which are SNPs from that survey, which was conducted about eight months ago. This is representative sampling. We are certainly aware that you can ask the general public questions in certain ways, that you can get them to say about anything you want, but we adhere to the standards of the American Association of Public Opinion Research, which is, puts us in civil penalty if we push-poll. In other words, we work assiduously to not get the answers we want, but get the answers that truly represents how people feel. In descending order of level of agreement, the question of, here are some views. We hear about climate change. For each statement, tell me if you strongly agree, lean towards, agree, disagree, or strongly disagree. We find the statement of climate change is occurring from human causes like burning fossil fuels shows 77% agreement. Climate change is occurring, and long-term impacts will be probably catastrophic at 71% agreement, and sickening down to the level of least agreement, climate change is from human causes, is a hoax and not occurring, 16% level of agreement. The last two items that I want to summarize here are, addressing climate change, is the strongest level of agreement is climate change requires much stronger regulation of greenhouse gas emissions at 75% level of agreement, and science and human ingenuity will solve climate change with little need to change our way of life at 20% agreement. And the levels of strong agreement are worth looking at, because you'll see that extremely strong levels of agreement are appearing in each one of these issues. It's, I think it's worthy to consider how your constituency feels on these issues, and one of the reasons we haven't been able to move this is because of policymaker inaction following from the way that the press and the way that industry has handled this. So I urge you to pay attention to your constituency. Thank you very much.
Joanne Ernst is next, followed by Ann Coleman.
Thank you, councilors. My name is Joanne Ernst. I live in West Eugene. My house was the one that for over a year had boarded up windows and broken doors due to a vicious attack by the SWAT team. I now have new windows and doors. I do live in Councilman Pryor's Ward. I'm here tonight to speak on two issues. The first one is that I am in support of Councilor Zelenka's resolution that he'll be bringing forward to have no coal trains coming through Eugene. The resolution just basically says that no coal trains will be allowed to pass through Eugene, cutting off any coal that can get to Coos Bay. This resolution falls in line with what the city of Eugene would like to provide to people, which is, you know, healthy communities and healthy environments. The other issue I'd like to speak to is the Opportunity Village. When the occupation camp was broken down at Washington Jefferson Park in the middle of winter, a few days before Christmas, the homeless population there was promised some shelter for the rest of the winter. That opened the Wheeler Pavilion for two days, and that was it, and that promise fell to the wayside, and no money was put towards sheltering them for the rest of the winter. A homeless task force was created, and I applaud you for spending the time and working with the community to bring some resolution or some answers to the homeless population. But I think that now you're obligated to move forward very quickly and determine some land and a workable solution to get some sort of shelter going before October, November, and the cold weather starts again, to make sure that our homeless population is sheltered for this winter. Thank you.
Ann Coleman is next, followed by Ashley Miller.
Hi, my name is Ann Coleman, and I live in Eugene. I'm speaking today as a volunteer representing Oregon Physicians for Social Responsibility. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. Oregon, excuse me, Physicians for Social Responsibility asks that you support two proposed city council resolutions. First, a resolution in support of reducing greenhouse gas pollution under the Clean Air Act, and a resolution to oppose the transport of coal for export through Eugene. And we respectfully request that you modify the proposed coal export resolution to require a review of comprehensive health impact assessment before any coal export facility or transport is approved by any state agency. Over 150 health professionals recently sent a letter to Governor Kitzhopper that explains our objections to the transportation of coal from Montana and Wyoming through Oregon to Asia. We want to prevent new sources of morbidity and mortality and increasing costs of health care in Oregon. If current proposals from large multinational companies are approved, we would see 150 million tons of coal shipped each year through the Pacific Northwest. An average of 26 loaded coal trains, each one mile long or longer, with over 100 cars propelled by four diesel engines, could pass through Oregon and/or Washington every day. Our concerns include new major sources of diesel pollution, coal dust pollution along train tracks and river corridors and at port sites, traffic delays, noise pollution, increased mercury pollution, and increased greenhouse gas emissions, which drive climate change. Coal trains traveling through our communities and massive coal ships on the coast will emit significant amounts of diesel particulate pollution. There are robust correlations between these pollutants and cardiovascular and respiratory problems, reproductive health problems, and malignancy. Coal dust blows off train cars containing mercury, arsenic, and lead. Exposure is linked to asthma and lung disease. Many grade-level train crossings will detain first responders for up to 20 minutes each as long cargo trains pass through town. Eugene residents have fought long and hard to improve air quality in our community and in our state. Why would we undercut our progress by allowing these huge new risks to the health of our families? Again, Oregon Physicians for Social Responsibility requests your support for the two resolutions and for a simple addition to Section 4 to our, from our- and for a simple addition to Section 4 to our, from our governor for review of a comprehensive health impact assessment. Thank you for your consideration.
Ashley Miller's next, with Gabrielle Monroe after her.
Hi, I'm Ashley Miller. I live on Nor Kenzie, which is over in Councilor Clark's ward. I'd like to speak in support of two of the resolutions that have been talked about tonight that were recently introduced to the city council. The resolution in support of reducing greenhouse gas pollution under the Clean Air Act, and the resolution to oppose the transport of coal for export through Eugene. I believe these resolutions go hand in hand and are equally important, but would like to speak specifically on coal transport. Coal transport through Eugene will cause many health and safety issues. It's been talked about tonight. Coal transport releases tons of coal dust per train, up to 3 percent of the train, of a car's load. Safety issues include derailments and spontaneous fires. Coal contains many harmful chemicals, including arsenic, mercury, mercury, and uranium, which can contaminate the soil, air, and water. Coal transport also employs very few, and its true costs are very expensive. A Harvard Medical School study recently pegged the true cost, including harm to public health, mining damage, pollution, and subsidies, at about $345 billion per year in the U.S. alone. A 2010 report from the National Research Council finds that the non-climate damages from burning coal are 20 times higher than the damages from natural gas, the next dirtiest and costliest fuel, fossil fuel in use. And a 2009 report from the National Academy of Sciences determined that U.S. coal burning results in $60 billion per year in health costs alone. I just urge the council to pass these two resolutions to help protect the quality of life here in Eugene and in Oregon. Thank you so much for your time.
Gabrielle Monroe is next, followed by Sharon Weber.
Good evening. My name is Gabrielle Monroe, and I live at 1435 Olive Street in Eugene, Oregon. I'm here representing the organization that I work for, Our Children's Trust, which is a Eugene-based nonprofit that brings litigation on behalf of youth plaintiffs. Currently, we're working on petitions against state governments, as well as the federal government, to enforce the public trust doctrine and ask our governments to take responsibility to protect the essential natural resources, including the atmosphere, that we all require for our survival. So I'm here to, on behalf of this organization, to voice our support of the Clean Air Cities Local governments are important trustees of the public trust and protectors of our public trust resources. And so that's why it's so important that local governments, like the Eugene government, take action like this, to follow the science of climate change and take steps that will actually make a difference on this important issue. In our petitions and lawsuits, our youth plaintiffs are asking the government to look at prescription for mitigating climate change that has been prepared by the best climate change scientists in the world, including Dr. James Hansen of NASA's Goddard Institute in New York City. And Hansen's prescription, Hansen's prescription says that, in order for us to bring greenhouse gas emission levels to the safe level of 350 parts per million by the end of this century, we will need to immediately stop increasing the current level of greenhouse gas emissions and reduce our current level of emissions by 6 percent a year for the rest of the century. If we wait until 2020, the Goddard Institute projects that it will, we will have to reduce our emissions by 15 percent per year, which would be pretty much economically infeasible. So the time to act is now. We also recommend that the resolution require the federal government to prepare a national climate recovery plan linked to this scientific prescription. And we also fully support the coal transport resolution. Young people are most vulnerable to the impact of climate change, and that's why we at Our Children's Trust are working with these courageous young plaintiffs to invoke their government's public trust obligations. Currently, there are local Eugene youth plaintiffs who are appealing an adverse decision in a public trust case and asking a higher court to declare that the atmosphere is a public trust resource.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sharon Weber is next, followed by Sally Nun.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Weber, and I'm from Eugene. And I'm here tonight to support the two resolutions, one against the coal transport and one for the greener air. And I will not repeat all the information that's been given to you already, but I will paint you a picture. I have been here seven years, but I moved here from San Pedro, California, which is in Los Angeles Harbor. In addition to coal piles that have been in the harbor for many years, there was also coke piles. I was active with several civic groups who managed to get the coke piles covered, because coke is a much smaller particulate and much more dangerous than coal, even though coal is very bad to breathe also. Wilmington is one of the communities, San Pedro, Long Beach are all communities around the harbor. They have the highest asthma rate in the country. Sometimes children cannot go out to play at school. And we were able to get them to cover the coke piles, two large coke piles covered with white, completely covered with vents and the whole thing. In a year's time, they were black, and that was because the coal piles were not covered. And that's what happened to the covers on the coke piles. So that'll give you a vivid picture of what coal does in the air. And I was breathing that myself. So I would really like to emphasize that you pass these two resolutions. Thank you very much.
Sally Nun is next, followed by Kathleen Corlett.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and distinguished councilors. My name is Sally Nun. I live in Ward 1. I am the chair of the Many Rivers Group of the Oregon Chapter of Sierra Club, with 5,000 members in Lang Douglas and Coos Counties. Thank you for the opportunity to address this body on the topic of clean air and coal exports. What do we know about the project the Port of Cuse Bay is courting? We know an anonymous coal company under the codename Project Mainstay is seeking to export 6 to 10 million tons of coal out of there every year. Shall we put that in perspective? Oregon's Boardman Coal Plant burns 2 to 3 million tons per year, but as a result of Sierra Club and others' involvement, Oregon is set to be coal-free by 2020. This proposed export project would amount to a significant step backwards in the efforts to reduce this dirty fuel's impacts on human health and its subsequent effect on climate disruptions. Multinational coal companies like Texas-based Kinder Morgan and Australian-based Amber Energy, which incidentally was caught lying to officials and underestimated their train loads tenfold, meaning they said they were going to carry 5 percent of what they ended up applying to carry, want to export coal through the Northwest to Asia. As they do, polluting loud trains will pass through a community all day and all night long, blowing those very attractive whistles. If we export dirty coal, we'll import dirty air. And many of the other speakers this evening have already addressed the toxicity of coal and diesel, as well as the delays to important emergency services, so I'll skip that part of my, my presentation. In summation, elected leaders all along the route have played a key role in addressing the health and safety concerns by demonstrating their concern on behalf of their impacted communities. A dozen city councilors and/or mayors in Oregon, Washington have already taken action. Your leadership is essential, understanding as a city, we have much to lose and nothing to gain by saying no to dirty oil and coal. Please choose the long-term health of our people and property over facilitating short-term profits from dirty energy by adopting the resolutions addressing these issues introduced by Councilor Zelenka on the 20th of June. Thank you for your consideration.
Kathleen Corlett is next, followed by John Borowski.
I'm Kathleen Corlett. I have a slight cold, so I found it funny tonight. I live at 2695 Crested Aruda Street in Eugene. I'm here as the chair of the Many Rivers Group Sierra Club, conservation chair, not the chair, Sally's the chair, I'm the conservation chair. I'm also here as a mother. I, I'm not that prepared, because I'm sick, and my son is sick, and he's got asthma. And I was home with him just before I came, and I was counting the number of breaths that he was taking in one minute. And when I'm not nervous, I take about seven to eight breaths in a minute. And he was taking 30, 35 breaths a minute, and he's panting. He's trying to get enough breath, because his poor little lungs are all constricted, because the air isn't that good around here. And every time he gets a cold, this happens, and a lot of kids do this. A lot of his friends have those inhalers. It's, it's this thing that's happening. The air is dirty. And some of it's allergies, you know, some of it's just, well, I'm at Valley, but do we really need to make it dirtier? Should we bring coal trains and have a bunch of more stuff in the air that has all the things that Mike listed, uranium? Is this something we really consciously want to say yes to? I hope you see, see where I'm coming from with that. So I looked up something just before I came, just got online and said, what does the Natural Resource Defense Council say? With some stats, what can I throw at you guys? Well, they're saying that 159 million Americans, so that's over half our population, 159 million Americans live in areas with bad air. And so, but what about that, like, Clean Air Act, you know? So how many communities aren't really living up to what the Clean Air Act says? How many communities could do better? They did a research study in 2002 estimating that 30 percent of childhood asthma is due to environmental exposures. It's not just something you're born with, it's the environment, it's getting dirtier. They estimated it's costing the nation $2 billion. $2 billion is kind of beyond my imagination, it's huge. I was at Almsi, and they had the thing that showed what a million grains of sand was, and it was about this tall and about, big around as a quarter. And then they showed what a billion grains of sand was, and it's about that tall, tall as me, no, pretty tall, and it's about that big around. So $2 billion is a lot. It's costing us a lot to have dirty air. So I don't think we should make it worse. In fact, I think we ought to maybe spend some time thinking about what we do want, which is clean air. Thank you.
John Borowski is next, followed by John Flannery.
Good evening, John Borowski, Ward 3. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm here today to talk to you about an item that you have on your agenda for Wednesday regarding the general obligation bonds for street preservations. I was the chair of the Citizens, or the subcommittee that put together the recommendation to come forward with the $43 million bond to help fix the streets that we have out there. That committee did a lot of good work to come up with that recommendation. We weighed a lot of different options. It was a well-balanced committee between industry, business, bicycle pedestrians, there were people from the utilities industry that were on that thing. And we did a lot of hard work thinking about what this bond should be going forward. We know we're not political people, but we did take political consideration. We know that you folks have to answer to your constituents, especially on revenue matters. We thought about that when we came forward with the recommendation. There was a good compromise between the bicycle pedestrian folks and the other side that was leaning more towards just curb-to-gutter, to come up with the amount, set aside for bicycle and pedestrian improvements and repairs. There is a Lindholm poll that was conducted in May on this issue that, that came to a conclusion that 59 percent would be in favor of a street bond going forward, 25, 25 percent opposed. So I think there is public, public support for it. The other thing is that Councilor Zelenka has brought up, this doesn't do the full job. This is a part of the piece of repairing our streets and roads that we have. There's more to be done. One area that is, you all are quite aware of, is the unimproved streets, and I think there is energy on council to at least do some research on that, which I'm very encouraged by. The other thing that, that we have going forward with this is that none of the streets that are there, or this money won't be used to improve or to increase capacity on our transportation system, except for in the limited case where some of the bicycle and pedestrians improvements might add capacity for those types of transportation. It's well, it's well thought out, and I hope you guys go forward with the recommendation and not hate too much.
Thank you. John Flannery is next, followed by Lisa Arkin.
John Flannery, Ward 1. What have we heard so far tonight? We've heard a presentation about homeless issues, and it's been said, although a lot of the causes of that are from national forces, it's up to you to take leadership to fix the problem. We've heard about climate change, and again, the same thing, it's like, we can't expect leadership from the top, we have to start here. And issue of coal exports, the reality is that people are coming to you for this statement, because it's pretty much all we can do. The legislation, the way that the law is hardwired, we really can't do much just to interfere with any interstate commerce that has to do with rail lines. The Interstate Commerce Commission was set up exactly to prevent local control of what happens on trains. So it's all, you've got this, this pattern where, instead of problems being fixed where they should be fixed, they're devolving on you to deal with. And the reason is, there's no profit in fixing them for the national government. And the national government is run at the behest of corporations who are trying to make a profit. And the Citizens United ruling just enshrined that. The idea that we are going to put controls on money flows that influence elections was thrown out. It's $1, one vote. And so we, I can understand why you might be a little hesitant to do what we're asking as far as putting this on the ballot for November. Usually advisory questions are around the West Eugene Parkway, or downtown redevelopment, so forth. But there are other times, like back in 1988, we had a proposal, advisory proposal about Eugene being a nuclear-free zone. Now, that's a national issue, even if it's couched in terms of what Eugene does, it's a national issue. In 1970, there was a proposal on, on the ballot about whether, you know, calling for the United States to withdraw immediately all of its military personnel from Vietnam and from Southeast Asia. It is appropriate in major issues for the voters to actually have a say. And that's what we're asking for. This is a major issue. Our system of governments, government on the national level, is broken.
And last up is Lisa Arkin.
Good evening, mayors and councilors. My name is Lisa Arkin. I'm here on behalf of Beyond Toxics. And Beyond Toxics wishes to express our strong support for the two resolutions proposed by Commissioner, Councilor Zelenka, that to oppose coal trains, and the second to reduce greenhouse gases under the Clean Air Act. We hope that U.S. city councilors will pass these resolutions and send a message to the state and federal governments that mining and transporting and shipping coal overseas from Oregon has long-term and considerable negative health impacts. The issue is obviously very important to our local community based on the testimony you've heard tonight, and in fact, it's being taken up by Eugene City Club this coming Friday, where Beyond Toxics and Sierra Club will be speaking. The Port of Cuse Bay and representatives from the Unknown The Port of Coos Bay and representatives from the unknown companies were asked to also be on the program and they refused. And this is indicative, I think, of the secrecy around these projects. You probably know from reading the newspaper that Sierra Club and Beyond Toxics have tried to get information for public review for the purposes of public forums such as the one you're holding tonight, so that the public can learn more about what's coming into our community. And we've been slapped with a $22,000 bill to receive such public information. That thing is not settled yet. The issue is still in the courts. And so we, yet as a community, don't know what Project Mainstay is. But we do know about coal dust and its impact to environmental health. I've been before you before to speak about the problems with air quality, especially in West Eugene and in the neighborhoods where railroad tracks would be hauling such coal trains. We hope that won't happen. And I've been here to talk to you about the evidence for high asthma rates, especially amongst our children in our community. In addition to everything we know about our local community, I wanted to read you a statement by the U.S. EPA that was recently in a letter they wrote to the Army Corps of Engineers regarding the various projects to export coal from ports in the Pacific Northwest, particularly the Port of Mauro and the Port of Coos Bay. That letter was dated April 14, 2012, just a few months ago. And the EPA said, "Our primary concerns about coal exports are related to the potential adverse effects from coal dust and diesel pollution. Coal dust is a human health concern because it causes bronchitis, emphysema, numerous lung diseases. Coal dust is an environmental concern because it may settle on water, soil, and vegetation and may impair biological processes such as photosynthesis." So it's a huge problem. Thank you very much.
I'm going to close the public hearing. And thank you all for coming. And before I turn to folks in the queue, I'm going to share a letter I received. It says, it's from the Environmental Protection Agency. Dear Mayor Piercy, on behalf of the more than 17,000 dedicated men and women proudly serving the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, I wish to convey my sincere thanks for your recent letter offering strong support for the EPA's first national standards to protect America's children and families from power plant emissions of dangerous mercury and other toxic air pollutants. As you know, the mercury in air-toxic standards will slash emissions of mercury and harmful pollutants, including arsenic, acid gas, nickel, selenium, and cyanide, by relying on widely available proven pollution controls that are already in use at more than half of the nation's coal-fired power plants. Two decades in the making, the standards will provide the American people with health benefits that far outweigh the cost of compliance. By cutting emissions that are linked to developmental disorders and respiratory illnesses such as asthma, these new safeguards represent a major victory for clean air and public health. The EPA estimates that the standards will prevent annually as many as 11,000 premature deaths, 4,700 heart attacks, approximately 130,000 cases of childhood asthma symptoms, and about 6,300 cases of acute bronchitis among children. Your kind praise of the EPA's latest action to protect air quality is very generous and much appreciated. I often remind my fellow citizens, however, that we at the EPA cannot do this work alone. We count on you and your leadership in helping the public to understand the importance of environmental stewardship and spurring them to take meaningful action. Please accept my gratitude for all you are doing to advance the EPA's efforts to create cleaner communities, healthier families, and stronger America. Sincerely, Lisa Jackson with the EPA." Councilor Zelenka.
Thank you all for coming out this evening. I, first of all, I'm interested in having a council discussion about an advisory ballot measure related to Citizens United calling for a constitutional amendment before our July 25th break, if possible. I'll look into that some more. I'd like to thank everybody that came out and talked about the two resolutions I put forward on global warming and coal trains. You're very eloquent in your rationale and your numerous facts about these two topics are clear support from my perspective of why we should support both of these resolutions. Also point out to council and the public of the numerous emails that we've gotten in support of these two resolutions recently. And I think the mayor's letter is a great example of, from the EPA Administrator, where local action does get attention in D.C. and it does make a difference. And then finally, I'd like to thank and mention Josh Scove for his service and leadership on the Sustainability Commission. He's leaving. And especially as Chair, you'll be missed, Josh. Thank you for your service.
Councilor Taylor.
Thank you, and thanks to all of you who reinforced our, my determination at least, to support those two resolutions. I think if anyone hadn't made up their minds, you would have helped us. I would like to know from staff the deadline for if we want to put an advisory question on the November ballot. Can you tell us that?
Glenn Klein has come over to talk about that.
There's the authority.
To put anything on the November ballot, was that the question?
Yes.
It would be before your break. So you could act. The last council meeting before your break, I think, is July 25th. You can act up until that point, but you would need to pass a resolution by that date.
Thank you. I hope we will do that.
Councilor Farr.
Very quickly, John Borowski, thank you for testifying tonight on the general obligation bond that we're going to be discussing on Wednesday. One thing that you said was very important, that a compromise existed between the people who were very much in favor of bicycle transportation and the people who were curb-to-gutter, I think is what you said. That is very important as we move forward with putting the GO bond in front of people, which is a replacement for the existing bond, which the, as you know, be serving as long as you have on that advisory committee. We got a lot more for our money than we expected on that last GO bond. All the construction that we're seeing going on around town, the repairing of roads, the new roads, the resurfacing is predominantly a result of that bond. So, John, thanks for your service on that commission and thank you for the testimony tonight.
Okay, Councilor Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everybody out for coming out this evening. But before I do that, I want to also thank Kurt Cory with Public Works. There was a road in my neighborhood, and I mentioned this at the Wednesday meeting last week, but I wanted to share it again in case you missed it, that one of the roads that is not improved that is in my neighborhood, Seneca, North Seneca, South Seneca, actually, here's North Seneca, was improved by gravel. And so that's some of the things we get to do when we pass these bonds, to take care of the maintenance of the other roads. We get to take care of roads that aren't maintained, and that's really helpful for neighborhoods like mine that don't have a lot of improved roads. I do want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and sharing their opinions with us. There's very few things that I have an opinion about very strongly, and the coal trains is one of the issues that I do have an opinion about. And so I'll be looking forward to the resolution that Councilor Zelenka is going to be bringing forward. I think that, you know, we have a lot of things in our community that we have no control over. They're already here, they're established. We can make them follow the rules. We can't change the rules. They're here already. This is something new. And I think that, you know, we need to be preemptive about this and really speak our minds about it and hopefully, hopefully come to a place where they do not come through our community bottom line, I guess is what I want to say. I have a lot of fear. I live right by the railroad tracks in the Trainsong neighborhood and, you know, there's a lot of issues in that neighborhood already. I think this would just compound the issues even more. So looking forward to Councilor Zelenka's motion.
Okay, with that, we're going to move on to the next part of the agenda. But again, thank you all very much. Next comes the consent calendar. Council President.
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Seeing no one in the queue, would you please vote on the consent calendar? Beth has a different duty tonight. There we go. Counselor, here we go. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you. All right, so next we have, next we have a public hearing in action, so on the resolution adopting a supplemental budget. And so I'm going to open the public hearing and remind people that you have three minutes to speak. And when you come to the podium, give your name, your residence, your ward if you know it. Timer will tell you when you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. And since it's John Borowski, I just know he knows what he needs to do here. So, John, please step forward.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm speaking to you tonight about the supplemental budget that you have before you. This is the last supplemental budget of fiscal year 12. There's a couple of items in there that I think you should at least direct your attention to before taking action. One is the Occupy Eugene costs are broken down, so you do have a true picture of what the ending of the Occupy Eugene cost us, so that when your constituents come to you, you have the ability to tell them where the money was spent and where it came from. That's being addressed in this supplemental budget. Another item that is of concern to me is the adjustment to the general fund regarding the increased cost for fuel to the Fleet Fund, Fund 600. There was a transfer of $106,000 from General Fund Reserve.
Excuse me, John. Folks who are talking in the back of the room, you're making it hard for us to be able to hear. Appreciate your cooperation. Go ahead, John.
There was $106,000 transfer from the General Fund Reserve for revenue shortfall to the Fleet Services Fund, Fund 600. Also another $93,000 that was absorbed by different account or different other parts of the city budget that they had to absorb that because of the increased costs of fuels. This is something that I think takes a looking at, considering that in the budget that you passed for FY13, the Fleet Fund Services actually has a reduction. So I would hope that the people who are watching the Fleet Services have figured out that the cost of fuel is going to be a little bit higher and build it in rather than having to take from the General Fund. I think it should be distributed throughout all funds. The last thing that I'd like to say is, I believe that the mechanism that has been used in the past few years of using the marginal beginning working capital as a source for one-time expenditures was a very good and prudent use. We used it for some streets. We tried to use it for some parks. It gave the city manager some flexibility, the city manager and the council some flexibility when there was a more pressing emerging need. But yet it gave the staff and the city manager some direction of how we wanted any extra money that was used to be spent rather than solely at the direction of staff. And so I hope going forward that future budget committees and councils can see that as an opportunity for a good use of one-time money. It's not ongoing money, but it can fix something that are a one-time thing.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing and once again, thank John for coming and talking to us. Kristi, do you have anything that you wanted to?
Well, I just have a statement about the action.
Go ahead and do it.
Mayor, City Council, I'm Kristi Hammett, Central Services Director. On behalf of the city manager tonight, I'd like to ask that this item is to conduct a public hearing to take action on the second supplemental budget for fiscal year 2012. The supplemental budget recognizes new revenue and authorizes other changes in legal appropriation. A description of the proposed budget changes is included in the agenda item summary, as we are hoping to take action.
Thank you. So this is where I ask if anybody has objection to taking an action on this tonight. I don't see anyone, so I'm going to ask the Council President to make the motion.
I move to approve a resolution adopting a supplemental budget, making appropriations for the city of Eugene for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2011, and ending June 30 of 2012.
Second.
Moved and seconded. And I think, Councilor Ortiz, you have?
Yes, as I was going over the AIS, I just wanted to call the public's attention to all the grants that we got. And I guess I just kind of had a question about, on the council page, Agenda Page 54. It's, or, no, I'm sorry, 53. Oh my goodness, where did it go? Anyway, it talks about all the grants that we got as a city, and I really think that that's positive, that we are able to, that staff goes out and gets grants outside of using tax funds. But there was one question I had about the issue of more funding for the parks, and I seem to have lost it, so maybe I will just send it in an email.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So then, I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I think you're ready to vote on this. Please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. And with that, we are finished with the business of the evening. Thank you all very much.